So I'm going to be just leading the meeting tonight because Joan's lost her voice a little bit. So I'd like to call the special meeting to order, noting that all board members are here and Dawn is with us via Zoom. And we just need an approval of the agenda.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't believe there are any public comments. We're just going to go straight into Randy and team have a presentation for us tonight.
Awesome. Thanks, Katie. What our purpose is here tonight is you'll see that there's a number of items listed on our agenda. We're really going to take them all together as we go through our presentation this evening. So you won't see us jump from one item to the next, kind of per how we normally walk through an agenda. It'll all be part and encumbered under the work that we're going to be sharing tonight. And just to give you a little bit of a precursor of what we're going to be talking about, we want to start off by really looking at an understanding of kind of where we've been and then where we're going in the future. And I think that's a super important piece for us to have a solid understanding of with regards to planning for future operational referendums and then also looking at where we are with our long-range facility plans and growth plans. So we have some folks and guests with us here tonight. You've all worked with Mark Roffers for several years. Well, he'll be on the docket here in a few minutes and his associate Nick is with him. And we're glad that they could be with us. We also have Bill Foster and Rob Demuse from School Perceptions who are here. And we'll be talking about some of the things with regards to our community survey. But all of these pieces are really entangled together. And what Steve and I really envisioned for tonight is to try to provide some context for some of the decision points that we are, that we have, particularly around the survey development for the community survey. And so that then we can also start our planning for not only a referendum in 2024, but also looking forward to what we need from a facilities perspective in 2026. So that's really where we are going to be heading tonight. One of the things I ask for the board members is there are some things that we're going to be talking about that we could very easily take a deep dive on. And I think the focus tonight has really got to be on trying to hit this at a high level so you have some context to it. We can come back to anything that you would like to really dive into more, particularly things like what Mark is going to be sharing from the long-range facility growth planning piece. But I think our focus is really going to be on some of the items that relate to our survey, survey development, survey finalization, structuring of the referendum for the fall, and then some of our pre-work and preparation for fall of '26 and facilities. So that's kind of what our, what our order is tonight. So I'm going to have Rebecca pull up our presentation. And what we're going to do is we're going to be bouncing between this and then in a few minutes I'll kick it over to Mark and Nick to talk about their piece. So the first thing I want to talk about is just to provide some context. And I was telling Steve today that this is a good reminder of where we've been. So if you take a look at this, this is actually off of the DPI website where you can take a look at how did referendums fare in the past. So when you go back to 2010, you will see efforts that we put forward with regards to new elementary school, adding a second floor to the high school. I told Steve it was a reminder of some of our failed attempts early on with regards to facility planning. But as he and I talked today, it was also a reminder of kind of the catalyst of the failed referendum in November of 2010. Because at that point, we asked Mark, who's sitting right next to me, to go out into our community and find out why the community did not support our referendum effort. Because in our mind, we felt that we had a solid plan. And what we heard in 2010 was they wanted to see a longer-term vision. They wanted to see beyond just building an elementary school. What did that mean for the intermediate school? What did it mean for the middle school? What did it mean for the high school? And wanting to truly understand that, they were not going to support an effort until we had that. So we spent some time, quite a bit of time, between 2010 and 2013, really doing a deep dive into what should our long-term vision be for facilities? And that's what yielded the referendum that passed in 2014. And it also yielded then the next steps. I'm not sure where it's at. It's not letting me advance it, Rebecca.
Sometimes it gets blocked a little bit.
Can you just move it for me, please? Just click. There you go. Thank you. And then in 2022, so we had the intermediate school in 2014, the referendum that we passed in '22 that then is going to lead to the opening of the New Heritage in '24 and the new middle school in 2026. So that's where we sit here today. We're in the midst of all of that work that's occurring right now. So let's just kind of put it in context as far as what's coming though. Because as we talked about at our retreat last summer, we have some additional needs. Because between those referendums in 20, between 2014 and 2022, we had two other referendums. We had one in 2020 as part of the pandemic where we needed additional dollars to operate with interventions and other supports for our students. And then we also had an exceed the cap number in 2022 to continue to support our staffing and the programs that we feel are important here in Wannakee. So in 2024, we've articulated and we've talked to you about needing to have an operational referendum. And that's really to look at those, those non-recurring referendums that'll be coming off the books in 2025 and also to address the classified staff compensation and any gaps we have between state budget revenues and what we have for increasing costs within our own district. So that's a piece that we're going to be talking about tonight, particularly as we look at our survey that School Perceptions is doing with us. We also want to put on your radar that we need to be looking at 2026. That's a point in time where we will be opening the new middle school. But it's also a piece of time where we're going to be looking at the transition between our current middle school becoming part of our high school. And in 2026, we feel that we need to most likely be back at referendum to talk about what does the completing of that facility look like? How do we merge those two buildings together more efficiently? How do we work with our programs that are going to operate between two facilities? And what are all of the different options to look at with regards to kind of a creation of what we're titling a more modern high school campus? So part of our work tonight is going to be focused on the fall of '24 and the operational referendum and then also some work that we need to get started on with regards to our options for what we need to do for the high school campus in 2026. But in order to help with that context, we've been working with Mark and Nick, who've done some really great work with us. They've been in front of us before to share kind of what they've come up with with regards to our long-range planning and what's happening in our community from a growth perspective. So I'm going to let Steve kind of kick off what their work is and then we can turn it over to Mark and Nick for what they're going to be doing.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate that. So in Board Book, just wanted to make the board members aware and the community aware that there are two documents that we attached. One is titled with the word "Report" at the end. That document should be viewed as the deep dive into this topic. But you are certainly welcome to open that up, take a thorough look at it. If you have feedback on that, whether it's tonight or in the future, I'm happy to be a conduit back to Mark about any questions or thoughts that you have about the document. But tonight, we're focusing in on the presentation that also you can find in Board Book. And just to share with you the difference between the report and the presentation, Ally and I had the opportunity to meet with Mark and Nick and go through the full report. And our goal was to pull out of there the information that we thought would be most pertinent to board members and ultimately the community. So that for those who wanted a high-level overview, you can look at the presentation and get the high-level takeaways of the report. For those who really want to take a deeper dive, the report is there for those who want to, to read it. So it's certainly included. We welcome questions on it. But I just wanted to provide some context about what Mark and Nick are going to be covering tonight. We certainly can pull up the full report if anyone wanted to do so. But the intentions for tonight are to focus on the presentation that's included in Board Book. Rebecca's going to move us off this presentation and over to the presentation that has been provided by MD Roffers, if you wouldn't mind switching over Rebecca. And then we're going to turn it over to Mark and Nick to go through this information. And then at the end, Randy and I are going to add some, just some comments upon conclusion of, of the presentation. So take it away.
Well, thank you. I might make this a little bit larger for us here. There we go. So you've heard my name several times now and I've seen many of you before. I'm Mark Roffers and this is Nick Johnson. Together, we're two-thirds of MD Roffers Consulting, eventually. Nick, you can have the name, naming rights. The, and we're very happy to be back and I appreciate the introduction from you two guys. So without further ado, I'm going to launch our presentation and Nick's going to take the bulk of it since he did the, the work in large part to crank out the projections. And as Steve mentioned, there's a lot of detail behind it. The detail is for those who, who want to see the deep dive, who want to know the, the degree of thoroughness we, we take to our work. The fact that when we projected enrollment, we do everything but, you know, look at the enrollment trend over the past 10 years, 20 years, and then just extend that line out. And it's also very helpful for us as we come back to the district every two, three, four years to update the projections, to see what we did the last time and where we're, where we're headed for the future. So our presentation will, as Steve mentioned, hit the highlights. We'll talk about where we think the Wannakee community is going in terms of housing growth and change, translate that into student enrollment projections, and then compare those to the capacities of your buildings, many of which were calculated many years ago under different circumstances. And then begin to talk about the implications of, of those projections compared to the school capacities. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick, who's going to talk, going to talk about the housing projections.
Perfect.
Sure, why not? Perfect.
Great. Well, we, in our enrollment projections, part of that is first starting with housing unit projections and then from that building off of enrollment projections. We project a significant housing development in the Wannakee Community School District through 2040 with about 4,300 additional new housing units. That's about 250 additional housing units per year that we project through 2040. That's a bit, a bit higher than what we experienced over the past decade here in the district, which saw about 230 new housing units built per year over the past decade. Overall, our housing unit projections are a bit lower than what we projected a few years ago in 2021. We'll get into that in a few slides and what that means with the district. We do project about half of all new housing units will be single-family homes. So about 2,100 or so new single-family homes through 2040. Looking specifically at the Village of Wannakee, we, we project about 3,000 new housing units through 2040 in the village. That's an average of about 170 new housing units per year, very similar to what the village has experienced over the past six or seven years since 2017. Just under 50%, about 47% of new housing units we project will be single-family homes. So a bit over 1,400 new single-family homes in the village. We project significant housing development really around the periphery of the village and actively developing subdivisions like Heritage Hills, Arboretum Village, as well as future development areas like Kill Kenny West, among others. Looking at other municipalities within the Wannakee Community School District, we project about 400 new single-family homes in the town of Westport by 2040, mostly in the Bishop's Bay portion, Bishop's Bay Development. That's half in the town of Westport, the eastern half of that development. And then we project about 800 new housing units in the city of Middleton portion of the district. That's the western part of the Bishop's Bay Development by 2040 with just under 20% of those single families. So we project the vast majority of new housing units in the city of Middleton will be multiple family of some kind. So condos, townhomes, apartments, duplexes, that type of housing.
And nearly all of that in Bishop's Bay.
And nearly all of that in Bishop's Bay, right. This is a chart that we prepared, the last round of projections that we did in 2021 that we've updated for this round of projections, showing our projected neighborhood development timeline. So these are predominantly single-family housing neighborhoods that are shown here on this chart. We have several of them developing over the next couple of years and becoming built out, like Kill Kenny Farms, Westbridge, Arboretum Village West. We have several starting towards the late 2020s, like Kill Kenny West, Mary Lake, as well as some land south of Westbridge. And then we have additional developments beginning in the early 2030s into the mid 2030s and extending onward after our projection period into the 2040s. The red shaded rows here are Tierney Developments. We know Tierney is a major developer here in the Wannakee area. So about half or just under half of the developments we project will be Tierney Developments. With the other half showing in green, there will be other developers developing those subdivisions. Jumping into our student enrollment projections, before we go into our exact enrollment projections, it's important for us and really a key for our projections to understand how housing is generating students in the district, particularly how different types of housing are generating students. Single-family homes, new single-family homes in particular typically generate the most numbers of students for a school. And then multiple-family housing and particularly new multiple-family housing usually generates the fewest number of new students for a school. Looking at single-family homes in particular, they generate anywhere from 0.66 to 0.74 students per single-family home. So a hypothetical subdivision of 100 new single-family homes would generate roughly about 70 or so students for the schools, based on these ratios that we've discovered during, during this round of our projections and also the last round of projections. These ratios are quite a bit lower than the ratio we discovered for homes that were built in the 2000s all over a decade ago, when those ratios were closer to about one student generated per housing unit. There's a lot of housing in the district that was built in the 1990s and 2000s. About 40% of all housing in the district was built during those two decades. About every 30 years or so is when we see major turnover occur in single-family homes and in neighborhoods. So those 1990s homes are beginning to turn over now to newer families. We've seen some of that in, in our 2024 student address data and home sales data, that there are younger families there, there are more elementary school students in some of that housing. We project that housing as well as housing that was built in the 2000s to really be major turnover areas through the rest of this decade and through the 2030s. This transition has been somewhat slow though than what we had anticipated in our 2021 projections, really due to high housing costs and high interest rates, as well as a shortage of local alternatives. Older generations, as well as the, the baby boom generation and older folks are staying in their homes longer than they otherwise would have.
Be careful, Nick.
Yeah, right. And, and then what we anticipated in, in 2022, in 2021 in our projections a few years ago. Based on, you know, high interest rates, high housing costs, but also a shortage of local alternatives, they're staying in these homes because they don't have the opportunity to stay in Wannakee but live in a condominium, for example, or a smaller single-family home. So they're stuck, really remaining in their larger single-family home, which is slowing that turnover to, to new generations. And then rural areas as well as neighborhoods that were built before the 1990s, we expect lower student ratios as those neighborhoods become more established. Looking at multiple-family housing, multiple-family units in the district generate about 0.11 students per housing unit. So you need about nine apartment units or nine multiple-family units to generate one student for the school. A hypothetical 100-unit new apartment building would generate about 11 students for the schools. We found a very little difference in that ratio between newer apartments and older apartments. That's something that's unusual. We typically see older apartments generating more students, newer apartments generating fewer students, really due to higher rents, lack of family-friendly amenities like playgrounds. They might have a gym or a clubhouse instead of a playground or something like that. But that's not the case here in Wannakee. We see all multiple-family housing really generating about that 0.11 ratio. In many other suburban Dane County school districts that we've worked with, that ratio has been about a half or a third of this result. They've been about a 0.03 to 0.05. So apartments are generating more students here than elsewhere in Dane County. Getting into our actual enrollment projections, so our total enrollment projections for grades 5K to 12, by 2040, we project an increase of just under 900 additional students. That's about 55 additional students per year on average. That does assume that the number of, that the resident students open and rolling out, attending private schools, or choosing to be homeschooled remains at constant rates as today. Also assumes a constant number of non-resident students open and rolling into your schools. And this does not include 4K or early childhood, it's just 5K to 12 students. There are four kind of main drivers that are expected to drive our enrollment growth, our enrollment increases here in the Wannakee Community School District. The first is significant expected move-ins. So most folks that are moving into new housing in this community and in the school district are moving from outside of the district. They're brand-new residents and brand-new students to the school district. They're not moving, you know, within the school district like we see in other, other communities. That's really been the current pattern over the last decade or two, if not longer, where the Wannakee area is attracting folks from elsewhere in Dane County, elsewhere in the state, elsewhere in the country. The second is increasing births from a large millennial generation. The millennial generation is now the largest living generation in America. The youngest millennial is actually 27. The oldest millennial is 43, so significantly older than what, what most people think of when they think of the millennial generation. I'm actually smack dab in the middle. I'm 33 going on 34. And so right in the middle of the millennial generation. And this is a picture of, of my two-year-old daughter, Ellen, working here on the screen. So we do anticipate increasing births, particularly through the 2020s as this large millennial generation is in primary productive age. The third is significant new housing construction. In a previous slide, we mentioned that we project just over 4,300 new housing units in the district by 2040. About half of those, about 2,100 of those will be single-family homes, which, which as we saw from that slide a few, a few slides ago, produces students at a significantly higher rate than other types of housing. And then the fourth and last point here is accelerating turnover of existing housing built in the 1990s and 2000s from baby boomers and older generations to younger families, particularly as interest rates decrease and the housing market improves. So that happening later this decade into the 2030s.
Just a quick question for you. Increasing birth rates for the millennial, is that just an assumption or do you see a pattern?
We, we have seen, in Dane County, births increased significantly in the beginning of the 2010s, but then decreased fairly significantly at the end of the 2010s. Not so much here in Wannakee. They've been pretty steady. They have increased though year over year since about 2020 here in the Wannakee Community School District.
And in Dane County.
And in Dane County. They have increased slightly.
So there's some evidence of that, yes?
There is some, yep, correct. This is map four from our report. This is what we like to call a heat map. This is showing our total enrollment projection changes by neighborhood throughout the Wannakee Community School District. The red, orangish-yellow colored neighborhoods, those are neighborhoods in which we project enrollment increases. The brownish-gray colored neighborhoods are where we projected enrollment to remain fairly stable through 2040. And then the blue color, the cooler color neighborhoods are where we project enrollment decreases in the Wannakee Community School District. The greatest projected enrollment increases are really forming a ring around the Village of Wannakee in currently developing areas as well as future areas that we anticipate will develop by 2040, in Kill Kenny West, Heritage Hills, Arboretum Village, Westbridge, as well as future development areas in the western part of the Village of Wannakee. The last kind of main enrollment increase area is in the southern part of the district in the Bishop's Bay portion in the town of Westport.
We don't have another map, but one of, some of those neighborhoods that you see in the cooler colors, like I'm focusing, focusing in Savannah Village area, there's a lot of kids there now. There's always been a lot of kids. We're projecting somewhat fewer kids as that, those areas age, but there's still going to be a healthy number of children in that area. So if we had another map that showed total enrollment, I'm sure it wouldn't be the blue color. This is, this is showing where we expect enrollment to, to go up from what it is today.
Looking at the three elementary schools enrollment projections, we project an increase of about 350 additional grade 5K to 4 students, with a little, a little bit under half of that increase at Prairie Elementary, increasing by about 150 students. Heritage Elementary increasing by about 120, and Arboretum increasing by about 70 or so students. The, the red and yellow shaded colored cells are, show our projected enrollment compared to the building capacity of the schools, which Mark will get into in the next section of the presentation. Looking at intermediate, middle and high school, we project enrollment at the intermediate school to increase by about 150 students by 2040. At the middle school by about 115 students and at the high school by about 260 students for a grand total increase of about 530 students at the intermediate, middle and in high school levels by 2040. Comparing these projections here in 2024 to the ones that we performed a few years ago in 2021, we are projecting somewhat fewer students by 2035. The 2021 projections, 2035 was the last projection year that we performed then. These projections now have been extended to 2040, but we're comparing that, that corresponding year of 2035 to each other.
So I think the point is we're not projecting a decrease in enrollment. Nick already shared, we're projecting an increase of about 900 students, but it is lower than what we thought back three years ago. And he's going to explain why now.
Yeah. In 2021, we projected about 5,500 students by 2035. Now we're projecting about 4,800 students by 2035. Several reasons were factored into that lower projected enrollment increase. The enrollment is still increasing, but at a, at a lower number than what we had projected in 2021. The first is the decreasing birth rate. So while the number of births have increased slightly in the Wannakee Community School District over the past few years, the population has also grown, as well as the number of housing units have also increased substantially. So the rate of births, based on population and based on housing units, has decreased somewhat. That's also resulted in smaller kindergarten classes than what we had anticipated in 2021, which as those grades progress will, will mean future fewer students in the, in the upper grade levels. The second is lower-than-expected student generation from, from somewhat new neighborhoods. Two neighborhoods in particular, Heritage Hills and Bishop's Bay, are producing fewer students now in 2024 than what we anticipated in 2021. There's some, some reasons for that, particularly some of the, the housing in Heritage Hills has seemed to actually be more attractive to empty nesters and baby boomers that are moving into that housing where we had anticipated it could have been more attractive to younger families with children. Somewhat fewer future housing units now are projected than what we expected in 2021. Overall, we're projecting about 600 fewer housing units in 2035 than what we anticipated in 2021, mostly based on delays in some developments across the, the district. The fourth is economic changes, especially over the past few years, including higher housing costs as well as rising interest rates. That ties into the fifth point here, the slower-than-expected relocation of empty nesters to different homes, that turnover of the housing stock from older families to younger families, resulting in fewer-than-expected opportunities for newer and younger families with kids in the district. And then the sixth and last point here is adjustments to our model. As we update our projections every few years for this district, as well as updates that we do for other school districts, we're always tweaking our model based on demographic changes and shifts, as well as based on housing changes and shifts in the housing market.
And just what we did well and what we didn't do well. You know, if, if we consistently over-project middle schoolers or high schoolers, we want to learn why and get better. And so that's something we're always sort of striving to do.
With that, Mark will take over the next section.
So what does it all mean? And this will merge into a more general discussion very shortly. So as Nick promised, I'm going to talk a little bit more about projections to the capacity of, of the buildings that you have.
to the capacity of, of the buildings that you have. And the first slide shows the proposed, our projections compared to the capacity of all three of your elementary schools combined. So just to give you a primer on what this chart means, the, the gray area is the ideal capacity or functional capacity of your school buildings, all three of the elementary school buildings combined. If you add the orange on top of that, that gets you up to the maximum capacity. And we can talk more about what the range is as we move forward. The lines on the map, the, the black line represents the projected resident enrollment, Wanaquie School District residents. And the red line adds on top of that, that constant rate of open enrollment in, or constant number of open enrollment in, students assumption. You know, that assumption may change if capacity doesn't increase, but that's what we're working with, you know, at the present time. So what Nick's pointed out with the circle here is somewhere in the 2030s, early 2030s, we reach a, a situation combining all three elementary schools together where you, you begin to have a capacity issue. And that's when, per the long-range plan that was developed in 2014, the fourth elementary school seems to be something that needs to be talked about and eventually built at that point in time. I don't know if it's good news or bad news, maybe good. It's a few years later than what we thought three years ago before interest rates hopped up to six and a half percent and other things changed, just like Nick suggested. But certainly is a need as we look out again to the early 2030s. That capacity issue is not the same among all schools. You probably saw, picked up on this piece when Nick explained what the yellows and the reds meant. Arboretum Elementary School has for many years, probably going on decades now, been hovering around its functional capacity. It's no different today. It's currently operating at just above its functional capacity. And with development in places like Arboretum Village and this churn of the nineteen nineties and two thousand neighborhoods that actually, you know, led to Arboretum being built in the first place, we're, we're suggesting that we should see an increase in enrollment at Arboretum going forward. What can be done about it? Well, you know, we suggest in our report and in this presentation some options. The first option is something that, that the district has utilized in the past and that it's, it's a, I put it in quotes because it's such a harsh, harsh term, but incoming students, you come late, we don't have room for you at Arboretum, we ask you to attend a, a different school. That could be come increasingly common over the next few years. It's possible that the district could explore interim attendance area changes before the fourth elementary school built, is built to relieve Arboretum. Whenever you change attendance areas, it's an emotional as well as a technical process. It's not to be taken lightly, particularly if you think, you know, you're going to be building a new school, which will guarantee you're going to be changing attendance areas in a few years thereafter. And the third option is, is to create neighborhoods that maybe have some flexibility, where students have the option to attend one school or another. Maybe they're equidistant from one another. Maybe bus routes are favorable to, to making that happen. So those are things as you, you know, we continue the discussion tonight and after tonight, you know, can, can be discussed. But that's probably something that is more of a next couple-year thing than more of a next, you know, seven-year thing when you're thinking about building a fourth, fourth At the intermediate and middle school levels, I, you know, mostly good news for you is that the investments you made in those schools are, are going to serve you well for the next several years up through 2040. You can see the intermediate school projected enrollment exceeding the functional capacity in 2035 and 2040. But I think it's important to keep in mind that that does not include an anticipated future classroom addition to that school. And so that may be needed around the same time as the fourth elementary school may be needed to get, you know, that, to make that yellow go away. And, you know, the middle school, you see that the, the functional building capacity of the middle school is eight hundred. We'd expect that to be approached, but not exceeded by the year 2040. So the investment that you'd be making in the middle school in, opening in September 2026 should, should last a decade and a half before you're going to start thinking about, you know, what do we do next with the middle school? High school is interesting. I think the, the capacity number that was developed for the high school was the oldest capacity number. And so if you just are looking at capacity of the high school compared to the projected enrollment, you're going to see, oh, we're, we're fine. And in fact, our high school capacity that we've been using for the last umpteen years is sixteen hundred and forty-two kids. I'm talking about the existing high school building now. And we're not projected to get to sixteen hundred until 2040. But what that doesn't take into consideration, I should just explain what the numbers I circle because whenever you circle something and read, that's where people's eyes are supposed to go right away. So that, in our, in our report, is that sixteen hundred forty-two number developed many years ago based on eighty percent classroom utilization, plus the middle school capacity that's been used and was also calculated umpteen years ago for the current middle school building. And what we clumsily did, but we, because we didn't have the ability to do a detailed capacity study, that's not sort of our gig, is we added those two numbers together to come up with a twenty-three fourteen. As I mentioned already, those capacity figures were estimated many years ago. Since then, the district has added a, a number of curricular programs, a number of activities to those school buildings, and spaces are being utilized in different ways and probably more intensive ways than they were back then. So it probably suggests that new, a new, some sort of new capacity study, given current use, makes sense. And then furthermore, the current middle school building, you know, is older, of course, it's being replaced. It contains smaller classrooms, many of which, most of which may not be suitable for high school students and high school classes. And in general, it's, wasn't built to serve as a high school in the year 2024, or 2027, or 30. So I, I, I wouldn't say take this information with a grain of salt. I will say there's much more to the story than comparing projected enrollment to the capacity of these two buildings as was estimated, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago for functions they will not, in the case of the middle school building, be serving in the future. And so this is just my summation, and I'm, I'm sure Randy or Steve will want to kind of take over here. Projections to capacity, certainly one important factor in long-range facility planning, but it's absolutely not the only factor. The second bullet lists a number of them, suitability of older buildings for newer purposes, different opportunities for school programming, what sites you have available and where, costs, debt capacity to take on new projects. Community preferences obviously are critical. Ultimately, they're the most important thing that decides whether a, a, a building gets repurposed or built. And as a result, we, you know, suggest that, you know, as your, your long-range facility studies was developed ten years ago now, finalized at least, and successful referendum were, were achieved, it, it's time to revisit that long-range plan and, and with, with new information, including, but certainly not limited to what we just presented tonight. So I think with that, I'll turn it back over to one of these two guys or, or the...
Let me just comment on the last part that Mark spoke to, because I think that's a real timely piece for us to be thinking forward with, is the long-range plan. We talked about at the very beginning when I started talking, that that grew out of between 2010 and 2013 in preparation for the referendum in 2014. So that has multiple phases to it. It had the first phase was the intermediate school. Second phase was the heritage middle school piece we're doing right now. The third phase would be, as Mark talked about, kind of into the future, the elementary school. And I think one of the pieces that I, I agree with what, what Mark and Nick are coming up with is that maybe a piece to come back and look at now what's kind of starting with where we're at and what we know is our next steps. How does that look going into the future? And I think some of the conversations we've had with regards to land acquisition, when do we have, when are we going to be, and when does enrollment start to have the need for an elementary school? Then what does it look like beyond that? So I think that is a, and that, that, that's an important piece for, for I think the district to look at. Additionally, and Steve and I've had the experience of going out and talking to the community during referendum efforts and just making sure that the assumptions that we're making with regards to their long-range plan align with what their beliefs are. That was a big part of the 2010 planning effort, was making sure that what we were doing and what we thought made sense aligned with the values of the community. So I think that's a piece that as you're looking for the future, particularly that in elementary school and beyond, of making sure that you have a, a touch point as far as what that looks like. So I, I agree with that aspect.
Just a couple of things to add. The report indicates that one of the earlier issues that we're going to be faced with in this version of the report is Arboretum Elementary School capacity versus enrollment. The report identifies a couple of options or recommendations to proceed. I just wanted to remind the board that we have in the past flexed neighborhoods. So the Bishop's Bay community at one point was the neighborhood that we opted to flex. And that, we had a number of students actually attending Prairie Elementary School from Bishop's Bay. So it is a reasonable option to consider as a partial move in between a full redistricting. We have gone through full redistricting in the elementary schools and typically the best time to do that is with the construction of a new school because it has to happen anyways. So in the past, we've looked at the flex option. That is probably the preferred option. It would be certainly easier on the community to look at a flex option. And typically, you take a developing area and flex that area. So you don't go into portions of the community that are currently assigned to schools. You would go into a neighborhood that's being developed, like in the past Bishop's Bay was, and you would let the families know that are building in that area that it is flexed. And depending on where we have capacity, the student may attend elementary school A or B. And I do feel that we were able to very successfully implement that flex component in the past, and that would be something to consider. The other thing I just want to mention, and we'll turn it over to the board, during the referendum in November of 22, we did receive a number of questions from the community about the difference between enrollment projections that people can see on our website. So I just want to address that for a moment. If you were to go to our website, and if you were to go into the budget planning section of our website, you will see under the budget planning process for 2425, the document that Ally and I have been working on, has a five-year enrollment history and it has a five-year enrollment projection. We use that projection for budget planning. But what's important to note is that is a mathematical model based on the past. It is very accurate in the short term. So we've had really good success with using that model to predict 2425. The model that Mark is bringing forward tonight is a model that incorporates a housing unit model that goes significantly above and beyond the model we're using for budget planning. So at times, we have had questions from the community about what are those two different sets of numbers and why do you have two different sets of numbers? And really, the explanation is that the budget model is used for shorter-term planning, planning the next several years for things like classroom sections, staffing at all of our various schools, budget planning, looking at the revenue limit. It's been very accurate. This is the model, the, the model that we're talking about tonight that we've looked at to say, when would we predict a fourth elementary school would be necessary? Our budget numbers are not the right ones to look at to say, when do we think a fourth elementary would come? So it just is a question that we get, is a question you may receive as board members, but just know there's going to be two different sets of enrollment projections and the purposes are entirely different. So with that being said, let's turn it over to the board members to see what questions you might have of Mark and Nick and about the presentation tonight.
Mark, one of the, at a previous meeting, you, you presented the average housing stock price of a house in Wanaquie versus Sun Prairie and Middleton. Did you do that same thing this year? And maybe it was in that sixty-four page report that...
We did. And Wanaquie's still the most expensive housing market in Dane County by a significant margin. Middleton Cross Plains is number two.
That's right.
Or Middleton, I should say, the Middleton Market, which, the, the lines are a little fuzzy that the MLS uses, but those two markets capture the, the school district. So yeah, we can answer more questions on that for sure.
I was wondering, do you have those numbers or...
I do, yeah. So the, the median sale price of a single-family home in Wanaquie, and the Wanaquie area in 2023 was five hundred fifty thousand. The median in Dane County was four hundred and nine thousand.
That's existing homes, so, so sales. Yeah, I mean, that's a, that is a significant challenge for Wanaquie. And we talked about this before and probably explain, explain some of the, you know, steadier enrollment that you've had as opposed to enrollment increases is the, the market, maybe it's changing a little bit, but certainly in the, in the 2010s was high-end housing or high-end housing. And I think you do have some additional, you know, options opening up here, which I think will help and are part of the picture in, in increasing enrollment.
So you've looked at enrollment for Wanaquie. How does that compare with, you know, did you look at or comparing it with Middleton and Sun Prairie at all or...
Yeah, we, we've recently done, updated enrollment projections for Verona District, DeForest, Sun Prairie.
You know, where, where do we fit down that...
The, the urban districts, I'll call them, in Dane County, MMSD, Middleton Cross Plains, and Sun Prairie districts had, over the period between, I'll say, 2017, 18, and 2022, 23, experienced decreasing enrollment. That seems to have changed.
Yes.
MMSD, yeah, MMSD's enrollment actually went up this year, which was a bit of surprise to people. But when you look at the birth rate, I wish we had the Dane County birth rate chart. But when you look at that birth rate chart, it was going great, going great, growing rate. And, and, and in the year like 2016 or 17, it fell off a cliff. It, that, that was largely confined to the central, I hate to call anything the core in our area. There's no core. But the, the central communities, the suburban communities, births, just like yours, and if you look at the, the, the detailed report, you'll see that, it's kind of bounced around, you know, pretty steady number of births even as the central part of the district was declining. You know, you can't tie it to the pandemic. You can't talk to the horrible things that happened on State Street in the summer of 2020, because it was happening before that. But it definitely happened and it affected those districts. So just to answer your question more specifically, DeForest District has been growing significantly. We're projecting continued significant growth, a lot of development in...
and we're projecting continued significant growth, a lot of development in DeForest. I'm sure you've seen it. Verona District has grown at comparable pace to you guys, maybe not as much as folks like me thought they would 10 years ago, but still, still growing. Yeah, it really varies by district. There's not a, there's not a common pattern, and it depends on a lot of different factors, including age of housing, and some of the things that we've talked about here today.
Are there any other questions?
Can you bounce back to our presentation?
Thank you. So we'll jump back to our presentation, and just to kind of wrap up what we learned from Mark's report, the fourth elementary is off in the distance, the 32, 34 range. Intermediate school addition, same thing. And then to give you a perspective, then leading into our community survey discussion, we felt like having a longer-term view would help us when we have a discussion on really the shorter-term topic for tonight, which is the development of that community survey. So I'll move on, or if anyone, go to the next slide, please.
Thank you, guys, for being here, for that presentation. You're welcome to sit through the rest of it, and you got a front-row seat, or you can go back up in the hot seat.
Well, whatever you prefer, if you want to kick us back.
Yeah, all good.
All right.
What I want to jump to right now is we're going to shift gears a bit, and we're talking about potential referendum in 2026. This is the planning and the kind of finalization of the middle school, high school building into what we're calling a modern high school campus. Right now, we are in the midst, and we have been for several years, working very closely with two very integral partners, one being Vogel Brothers and one being Epstein Union Architects. And so these two slides are really pieces that, Steve did some work with both the leadership at EUA and at Vogel, and what they have proposed to us is a continuation of the terms of when we went through and selected them into our process for the '22 referendum. So the building of our Heritage Elementary and the middle school. One of the things that we feel administratively is critical is for us in order to keep this work moving forward, and given the, I guess, the intersection of this work right now, particularly with how deep they've been working with us on certain projects at the high school, and just a full understanding of everything going on within our district, we're recommending to the board that we extend their contracts so that we can continue to work with planning for the middle school, high school campus. In order for us, and there's been conversations amongst our committees about where are we at with planning for that type of work? Well, our contracts right now with Epstein Union and Vogel only extend through the scope of the '22 referendum. So anything further beyond that, as we're looking at, well, what can we, how can we reconfigure, do things at the current middle school to make it integrate better with our high school, and what are some of the amenities that we want to improve at our high school? That requires us to have additional contractual language with them. So that's what we're proposing. You can see in Board Book the two letters, one from Vogel and one from EUA. We're not asking you for your approval of that tonight. We feel that this was just a piece to bring to your attention of what we think is important for us to move that work forward, also answer any questions that you may have, and then we will bring this back for your consideration at Monday night's board meeting. But with that, I'd open it up for any questions for either Steve or I. The one piece I want to add in here that's a little bit different with the EUA aspect, the second paragraph does talk about us doing a more robust, kind of long-term athletics planning piece as well. We feel that that is an important part. We've talked about that a bit at co-curriculars and at the facilities committee. So in looking at some of the pre-referendum work that we would do with EUA, in addition to any capital projects, there'd be a separate part where we're also working with them on a visionary process for our athletic facilities.
I think it's important to, you know, have a long-range plan or a long-range vision for the athletics, because we get all of these different requests, you know, to put different things in. And I think, you know, what we should do is have that master plan so that people know where we're going. And I guess, you know, from my standpoint, at least if people are raising money for different parts, because a lot of the stuff we may not be able to fund out of our budget, you know, at least, you know, there's a, there's a plan as to what we think, and that's working with the athletic departments and things like that, or the coaches and so forth, to come up with that, that plan. And now we have a plan that we can go to the community and say, hey, you know, this is what we're doing. If you want to help us, you know, with the fundraising, that would be great.
So there'd really be two parts to that. One would be, as Jack has talked about, kind of a vision for the athletic piece, and then a significant part of that would also be then looking at that vision for what does a more modern high school campus look like, and multiple different iterations and options that we can bring to the board in the future. So again, not asking for a vote tonight, we'll bring that back on Monday, but certainly we'll answer any questions that board members may have with regards to what you might see on Monday night on that topic.
Does EUA deal with the sports as well as the buildings of the schools? Are they-
Certainly, I mean, that's definitely a piece, and we've had that conversation with them, and yes, they, they can help with the master planning of that, and certainly if there's other entities that we have to work with, for example, civil engineering, et cetera, we have abilities and relationships to do that. Mark?
So I'm assuming if we were to do that athletic piece, that's in collaboration with the boosters and coaches to kind of get their vision, not just, you know, our vision, and also then balancing that with Title IX and the impacts of those plans?
Right. I mean, I think all of those is a good points, Mark. I think that's part of what the process would be. This isn't going to be a quick process, that's going to be a year to process to pull that together, to take a look at all of those different aspects. Steve and I and Allie have done some of our meetings with regards to budget planning. We've talked to Nick Conrad, our athletic director, just to start putting together his vision as far as what are some of the things that he sees as needs. That all pairs into then the conversations that we would bring forward with regards to that. But I think that's a, it's, I think it's a parallel piece, it's related to the high school campus, probably not as impacted by some of the decisions we make with regards to the instructional side of the house, but definitely is a piece that I think the long-range aspect of it will be helpful for the board moving forward as, as projects can then be articulated, costed out, and you can see kind of the vision of where it's going. Yeah, I think it includes all of them.
By extending or their offering, extend the contract, hope these guys have seen you in Vogel, are we leaving anything on the table or opportunities to open that up to potentially improving that? I get the whole relationship thing, but-
I think that's a conversation that we've had. We just, we felt that just the timing of where we're at and the integratedness of the work that we've already done, and that we felt that we went through a very thorough process just a few years ago, that was put out for significant bids, that we felt that this, and that they're honoring those moving forward, we felt that that was competitive. And it was also in the interest of the district to be able to start that process right away. So that was kind of our rationale for it, Ted. And I guess certainly there's always that option to move things out to a bid market on those things as well. I think that it prolongs some of the work and potentially creates, there's this continuity right now, and I think that's worth something.
So if we extend these contracts, will they start the work as soon as possible then? Is that your concern?
Right. Our vision for that is if, on Monday, that the decision of the board is to extend those moving forward, and we will engage with them as soon as possible to really determine kind of what that process will look like, articulate what our vision for that is, and start that work, and they'll be kind of very similar.
Don has a question.
Go ahead, Dawn, I'm sorry.
Ten, actually, I think it was Ten, it's hard to tell with voices, asked part of my question, which was kind of tying back to not having been a part of the process of selecting Vogel and EUA the first time around, so I'm hearing that that was part of an RFQ, and that that was an extensive review process.
Right.
How long did that process take? And I apologize for not knowing this, like, if they were to go the route of taking this to market again, rather than leveraging the relationship that exists, how long does that take?
Steve, Sarah? Sure. Dawn, my estimate would be three to six months, because we do one at a time, and then the board took this through facility committee, which did an in-depth interview process, so it would likely be in the three to six-month period. Now, it could be shortened if the board preferred to issue two RFPs at the same time, which could be done, but typically, the architect is selected first, and then you have the second process, but it would be in that range. And I certainly would, we have all the documents, Dawn, from back when the selection process was made. I could very easily email them to you if you had an interest in having some additional background. Would you like to see any of those documents from back then when we did that process?
Um, yes, actually, I would. I have no, just to be clear, like, I have no complaints or qualms with Vogel or EUA, but I just like to peek at how close or tight those bids were to the next competitive bidder. And I'm assuming they weren't necessarily the lowest bidder, was that, because if there were interviews, it's not just looking at the numbers, right? So there's conversations, that also led to the conversation, decision.
They were the lowest responsive bidder.
So I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I apologize.
They were the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, can I just clarify? We actually hired them in 2018, and they're honoring the numbers they gave us in 2018, or did they change those numbers because we shut down and COVID and all that time passed, or are they still working with their 2018 numbers?
Great, so I appreciate that question, that's a great question. So the process started with both firms with the original intent that the board had to target in November of 2020 for the referendum process that occurred in November of '22. So the selection process, off the top of my head, was either late 2018 or early 2019. Both firms honored those proposals, the figures included in the proposals for the November '22 referendum, and we started the discussion regarding the high school campus planning from a premise of that was a competitive process that the board went through, and our request to both EUA and Vogel was to consider extending those terms further. If the terms had changed, I think the administrative recommendation would have been to review the market because it had been so long, but due to the positive response that we received from both firms to extend those terms to a potential high school campus referendum, we decided to present the board with that information.
Thank you.
So to be, to be clear, the contract didn't have their rates suggesting year-over-year for interest or inflation or anything like that, it's the same fixed rate for the last five years?
Sure. So to answer Dawn's question, there's a couple of components to it. Labor rates clearly change. So like in all of the agreements we have, so like the agreement with Vogel on the guaranteed maximum price for Heritage would include the labor rates at that time for electricians, masons, et cetera. So the labor rates absolutely change over time. They'll be different for the middle school. When the board is presented with a guaranteed maximum price, the labor rates will look different, and they would for a high school campus referendum if, again, a project was, you know, started in '26 or '27. So the labor rates do change. The fee proposals-
Every contractor.
Right, with every contractor. But what isn't changing is the terms that they propose to the board. An example of the term that was proposed is a fee, a fixed fee on the work. So for both EUA and Vogel, their original proposal has fees that are associated with the work, and they're percentage basis. So those are the fees that they're extending to us. I can, when I send you the information, Dawn, the board actually had an evaluation matrix that had everything in it, fees in it, labor rates at the time in it, project manager, it was all identified in that process, and you could get a chance to look at it. So you would be able to see, you know, as the projects move on, like, what changes and really what doesn't. And so the extension is really regarding like fee percentages and other dollar amounts that don't change over time, as an example, like labor rates do.
And we can share that with all board members, that you all have access to if you have interest in that.
Any other questions?
At this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Steve. We're going to start talking about the survey. The community survey is something that Steve, is something that we have been talking to you about for a while. We showed you a very early iteration of that, and tonight we have a few of our partners from School Perceptions online, and then Steve's going to walk us through some of the timelines and decision points that we have to make, and then at the end, we have really kind of what our thoughts are administratively that may at least spark the discussion as far as what we then need to make decisions on for Monday night.
Thank you, Randy. So as Randy mentioned earlier, we do have Rob and Bill joining us from School Perceptions. So at any point, if board members, you know, have some questions that are more related to surveying and what Bill and Rob are seeing across the state, certainly feel free to pose a question to them, and we'll have an opportunity to include them in the conversation. The first slide that you're seeing regarding the community survey really addresses the timeline. So obviously, you are aware of the fact that back in December, the board approved the survey, we've been working through drafts. On February 6th, the Budget Committee did have the opportunity to take an initial look at the survey. There was great discussion at the meeting, there was some feedback, which we will get to in a moment. The original intent was on February 12th to have a review of the first draft. Randy realized that this was a topic that would be very difficult to fit into a monthly board meeting, so we appreciate you giving us the time tonight. And then the intent is still to request approval of the final version of the survey next Monday night. Any specific financial questions that come out of tonight can be discussed on Friday with the Budget Committee. We do have this as a potential agenda item for Friday morning, as well as next Monday for final approval. The intent is to release the survey after spring break. The data response will come back during May. We have the opportunity to work with the school board to potentially share options for draft resolutions in May or June. We did talk about the fact that Randy has been communicating with Dr. Brown about the possibility of the timeline. Do we do this prior to Randy's retirement? So we've set the schedule up to allow that to happen at this point. So I'll move on to the next slide that discusses the two major themes of the survey. The first portion of the survey is focused on the superint- The first portion of the survey is focused on the superintendent transition. What is the district doing well? What can the district improve on? And I'll just take a quick moment to thank the folks from School Perceptions. The idea of really combining the topic of superintendent transition and district finances came from a very successful community survey process they had in another similar community that had a longstanding superintendent retiring. And so this was based off a model that they presented to us as a concept that had worked really well in that community. So that's why we've got the two sections. The second section on district finances really covers, I would say, three themes that are important for us to talk about when we get to the section on finances. It's really the replacement of the non-recurring operational referendums, a discussion surrounding the classified staff pay gap. And then the third discussion is the resource gap between state-of-Wisconsin budgets and really the inflationary costs. Just a note, as a reminder for the community, it's important for us to continue to state this, even if, even if the board considers a referendum for November of '24, it is not a '24-'25 referendum. That is something we're going to have to be very clear on because in November of 2020 and in November of '22, those referendums were immediate. They were for those fiscal years. So this is different, that we would have to communicate that it is not for '24-'25. It's a '25-'26 discussion. The first four pages are on superintendent transition. Randy had the opportunity to craft the initial Page 1, and so we did have that opportunity to get that feedback from Randy. Page 2 is information on the respondent, and then Pages 3 and 4 are on the community feedback regarding the school district and our planning focus. So first four pages are intended to be on the superintendent transition topic. Final four pages are intended to be on the topic of district finances, and we'll get into that in just a moment. So the feedback from the Budget Committee, so as I mentioned, we have the opportunity to spend some time with the board members on the Budget Committee. The discussion really focused on three different major themes. One of those themes was the two-year versus four-year operational referendum and potential referendum cycles. There certainly could be consideration of a cycle that is a two-year bridge to a potential November '26 high school capital referendum question. There also certainly is a reasonable solution that would look at a four-year option that would work along presidential election cycles. The committee talked about recurring versus non-recurring. And then the committee also talked about the concept of step-up dollar amounts versus a stable dollar amount. Examples of a step-up dollar amount is what we just did. That was the 1 million, then the 3 million, and the third year should say 6 million. I think that says 5. So it's the 1, 3, and 6. A stable referendum would be an example of an increase in $4 million for four years. Totally different ways of writing the question, so the committee did have some conversation around that topic as well. Out of the Budget Committee meeting, there was a request to consider, for the board to consider, what would a question look like on this survey regarding the topic of recurring and non-recurring referendums? And again, for those in the public that are watching tonight that aren't familiar with those terms, non-recurring can be referred to as temporary or it expires. Recurring should be referred to as permanent, and it does not expire. So this question was designed to be an option for the board to consider if the board wants feedback on that. I did state to the Budget Committee that the School Perceptions team indicates that typically this question is not asked, and it is a board decision that occurs after the results of the community survey have been provided to the board, that typically this discussion occurs at a later point. However, if the board is interested in knowing the community's perspective on the topic of recurring or non-recurring, this is the time for us to ask. Now, off to the left, you do see we put the, it says new information. So Joan asked a question at the last board meeting that challenged my thinking on this because I had not thought of that topic before, which was the idea of could a single referendum question include both recurring and non-recurring funding? Well, Ally and I did have the opportunity to connect with Quarles &amp; Brady, which is the top law firm in the state for writing resolutions and issuing debt for public school districts. And the answer is yes. So a single referendum question can include both. So that's just something as board members to keep in mind. That is new information to us, and it's certainly something that could be factored into this discussion. Now, that would slightly change the question off to the right. So just keep in mind, the question off to the right was written and posed after the Budget Committee meeting, but before Joan posed that question. Okay, so just keep that in mind. School board feedback requested, so we're trying to capture for you what we believe are the key factors on the financial end of the survey that we need to have your feedback in order to develop the final survey. As Bill and Rob have shared with Randy and Ally and myself, it is critical that the board determine what it is that you're asking the community to weigh in on. And so we would need to construct what that question would be now to be able to send that out to the community. An example of that would be, are we sharing with the community and requesting feedback on a two-year or a four-year question? Are we requesting feedback from the community on a step-up dollar amount like we just used or more of a stable dollar amount? Or any other feedback that you might have on the survey? Randy wanted to sketch out as an example-
Don has a question.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca.
Don, I could wait until, if there's a better time. I was just going to stay on the first question. I do think it's important to know how the community feels about step-up versus stable amounts. But the presentation we were given at the board review was that recurring referendums could also step up. I'm not sure how that works as, you know, like if it's step up over the course of three years and then hit a stable amount. But the way that the question's worded at the moment, it makes it appear that you cannot step up a recurring referendum. That's, that was all.
Thank you, Don. So let me just get through this slide, and then we will, we'll kind of wrap it up and then jump into the board feedback portion. So what Randy thought would be helpful in the discussion on really the two-year or the four-year is Randy asked us to merge what we had learned earlier from Mark with that presentation with what some schedules could potentially look like moving forward over the next six to eight years. So we sketched out a two-year option, we sketched out a four-year option, and this just gives as board members, gives you an opportunity to kind of sketch out and think about what a longer-term look for this might be. On the left, it starts with the concept of what would a two-year operational question be? What would the abridge question be towards a capital referendum question for a high school campus? On the right, that is what a four-year referendum cycle would look like. However, in the end, if the board was going to also move forward with a high school campus question in November of '26, you would see by November of '30, either scenario likely would have three different periods of time or three different election cycles that the board would be considering. And if you go out even further to the possible fourth elementary school. So in the end, they're similar, but yet slightly different schedules. So it's just kind of an opportunity to kind of see what a bigger picture might look like over time. And then, go ahead, Jack.
Steve, before you go, the previous, I don't understand what the November '24, '26, '30.
The years.
'26, '28. But it still looks like it's-
It's two years.
Two years apart?
Yeah.
Two years and a four years.
Oh, for, yeah. And even in the four-year, you get two-year cycles.
You do. You still have to be there in '26 regardless.
Because the operation was four years.
Yeah. It's kind of how do you want to structure the operational question?
So the four-year cycle, the November '26 is a capital referendum, yeah?
Yeah.
That's right.
So then, moving on, what we wanted to share with you was to help lead the dialogue tonight as an example of what this could look like, and then we want to open it up. So include additional questions in the survey regarding recurring, non-recurring. A path is to say, no, the school board makes this decision in June. And then Part B says, we've learned something new, which is the board could give consideration to the expiring operational referendum funds being asked as recurring and any new funds being asked as non-recurring. So that's an option that you now have that we have been prompted with based on your question, Joan. Number two, two-years versus four-years. The two-year option would follow the example on the left-hand side of the previous slide. One of the advantages of a two-year operational referendum versus a four-year is it'll have a lower total dollar amount, and it does allow the board to evaluate the '25-'27 state budget cycle to see what actually happens. When you take operational referendums out four years, it just becomes more challenging because now you're going through two state budget cycles, making it difficult to predict. So there are advantages to considering shorter operational referendums because you can really connect the resources to what the state provides during the state budget. And then the total number of election cycles, you know, just sketching out those examples, ultimately in the, in the end, there's not that much of a difference. Step-up dollar amount versus stable dollar amount. So the Budget Committee was definitely focusing the discussion on the step-up dollar amount. And the reason for that is property tax levy purposes. So the step-up dollar amount matches the increase in an operational referendum with the need for the expenditures. Managing that over time is what allows the property tax levy increase to be more manageable for the community. So when you start with, let's say, an addition of, let's say, $4 million, a stable dollar amount would result in asking for dollars in year one you actually don't need to spend. And so then you're parking those dollars in fund balance, but yet you've taxed the community for those funds. Yes, you then draw them down in year two, but one of the criticisms that you could hear about a stable dollar amount referendum is the fact that more funds are asked for in the early years than are really needed. And that's a fair statement to make because that's what happens in those referendum questions. And so the step-up dollar amount has been used in our past operational referendums that increased across fiscal years. So I think it is important to note that our community has viewed step-up dollar amount referendums in the past positively. That was the strategy, if you remember the slide that Randy pointed to back in 2014. That was the strategy the board used for the new intermediate school, and that was well received by the community because it was phased in. At that point, we did it over four years. And it allowed us to spread out that property tax levy increase and minimize the impact in any one given year. So that's an example of the type of feedback we're hoping to hear from the board members tonight. So I'll see if Randy has any final comments.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think one of the things that Steve and Ally and I spent quite a bit of time on is just trying to process through what are some of the best ways to structure this. And I think the greater clarity we get on some of the structure, the greater clarity we have in asking these questions on the survey. So your feedback is really important. The question with regards to recurring or non-recurring has kind of become a little more difficult to ask because it's no longer just pure recurring or non-recurring, there's also a hybrid model. So to me, it's, it's really a question, in my opinion, that the board should make as you get to that point versus trying to vet that out within the community on something that's already hard to explain.
Back to Don's question on the step-up amount on the recurring?
You could do that, yes.
And how does that work?
Yeah, so good question. So what that would look like with the step-up dollar amount is we would be able to articulate what that amount would be, so whether it's two years or four years, and we'd be able to include that in the survey. So it would look like X amount for the first year, X amount for the second year, and then the property tax levy impact would be communicated, and then the community would see that. And I'm glad you asked that question because the one thing that I want to make sure that I communicate on this, in the 2022 referendum, when we went out and had a community survey and then explained the information on the referendum to the public, there was no tax impact from the change in the total tax levy that the board approved that fall. So if you remember going back to November of '22, the board approved one option that defees debt or refinance paid-down debt and approved one option if the referendum approved, that is no longer possible. So this question that we would pose to the public would be more of a traditional survey question that would say, for every X amount of dollars, your property tax levy would increase by X. The strategy that we used for November of 2022 with debt service deficits is no longer available because we are using those funds on the debt related to the November '22 referendum. So Ted, to your question, the survey would need to be designed as a more traditional survey question that would be asked that would identify the dollar amount and the property tax levy impact to property taxpayers. So it would look different.
Yeah, but to Don and Ted's question, if you go back to 2014, we had a recurring, recurring referendum that stepped up, and just for argument's sake, it was 1 million, 3 million, 5 million, and over, and then recurring after that. So that's how we built it up.
And it does the same, it just repeats that same.
Then it, and then once you get to the five, then the five continued, then it continues.
It stays at five.
It stays at five.
Right. So you stepped, instead of hitting it at five year one, you stepped it up based on what you needed through that period. At that point, we were opening a new school, we had some additional costs at the end of that. We didn't need all that money upfront, so we stepped it in, and then it was recurring after that. What Steve and I are talking about here in kind of Item 1B is that we have the 8.1 million that comes out of the 2020 referendum plus the 2022 operational referendums. Both of those are going to come off the books at the same time. The total of that's the 8.1 million. Those are dollars that we've encumbered into our budget and we'll continue to be asking for. So a consideration we're stating is that that part could be recurring. Then any additional funds on top of that could then be at a non-recurring basis. So it would be a longer question that we would ask, but that's how that could be structured based on some of the, on the question Joan asked. The two-years versus four-years, Don asked, made it some good points at our last meeting when we were talking about this. The four-year cycle kind of puts you on the presidential election cycle. And there's definitely data that shows that you have a higher turnout and you have a higher percentage of referendums that pass. The two-year cycle puts you on the governor's race, which has a little bit different, but it's within- it's within three percentage points as far as a difference with regards to pass rates of referendums. One of the things that we've had a conversation about is knowing, is two variables, knowing that we're most likely going to be at referendum in twenty-six for a capital question, and also looking at some uncertainty with the state budget. Does a two-year initial referendum make some sense? And then you can step it up, you can keep your dollar amount a little bit more controlled, and then you have, then you're able to reevaluate in 2026 to see kind of which your items might be going forward and what your needs are. And then the step-up piece, I think that's something we've done in the past, and I think that has been well received by our community. So from our perspective, that makes a lot of sense to us as well.
And then just as a reminder, both Bill and Rob are patiently waiting for any questions from board members. I know that we appreciate both that you've been hanging out with us tonight. They're key folks for the drafts of the survey, and Ellie and I have a meeting scheduled with them immediately after, after we have this meeting tonight to work on that final draft. So please feel free to ask either one of them questions about what they're seeing across the state, survey development. They have great expertise in this area, certainly welcome to reach out to them as well. With any questions?
I'm fortunate for them, but not about this, it's about a page on the survey.
Go ahead.
Because I might get that off the table because these are bigger fish to fry, but could we look at page five of the survey?
Rebecca can pull it up here, too.
Right there. I asked this in budget, and it just struck me strange that this is the only page where we ask for narrative feedback versus motive feedback. And it pertains to the three different questions that we're looking to structure the operational referendum for. And I'm just wondering if it'd be more straightforward information if we just have the, I support strongly, you know, those five questions that we asked on the previous page and the post-page, rather.
That's a good question, and we actually have a draft that we can show you that has it done that way. The confusing thing with that, though, in your case, is the eight-point-one is a renewal. So there would be no tax increase over the current level. The other two projects, due effect, show a corresponding tax impact. So we can do it that way, but I think through conversation, we ended up with a conclusion that it's better to put them all together. Right now, the strategy reflects, or the survey reflects the strategy that combined all three of those together and asked one question for a thumbs up, thumbs down. But it could be another, a different strategy, which would produce a different survey design, would be to ask for each, each piece separately.
And so what Mark is referring to is there's three different components that add up together for the question that's being posed to the community on the next page. And we did have, we did have discussions about whether or not, do you ask each of the three components, or do you ask, like, at the end about all three of them, would you support that operational referendum? So we definitely had discussions on that, looking at it from both perspectives. So what you see on the screen right now is, again, this is a draft, we're going to work on finalizing it, but it would be the summation of the eight-point-one million is the expiring non-recurring funds. The nine-hundred thousand was an estimate for hourly staff. Brian Grabarski has since updated that data, and so we're going to work on updating that number. And then increasing operational cost was identified at two-point-six million in '25, '26, and '26, '27. And so the question then that we posed in the tax rate impact was for all three pieces added together. So the thought was, if the board wants to know what the community thinks in total, about eleven-point-six million, we'd ask it there. However, if the board wants to know more about the three different pieces, we would go the way Mark just suggested.
Don has a question.
I wasn't sure if anybody's going to ask a follow-up on the last one or not. Yeah, my question was, is there any disadvantage to asking, for the major bucketed areas where we talked about additional questions, is there any disadvantage to asking the public those questions? Because personally, I'm very interested in what they had to say about two-years versus four-year, recurring versus non-recurring, step-up versus stable. Like, I would like their input versus just leaving it as a board decision. Is there any disadvantage to that?
Yeah, I guess I would chime in on, I have an opinion on that. The problem is the average person won't understand. So you get, the board has been thinking about this critically for literally months, if not years. So to put it out to the average person and begin to explain what the difference is, which then raises the question, what are the advantages? And so we've tried it, but I don't believe it will provide you good data, informed data. So at the end of the day, I guess my conclusion is, the board's been tasked with wrapping their minds around this and then coming back to the community and saying, we're asking you to consider. And the simpler, the better. So to the extent people can understand what you're asking for, that's better than, and this is where I get a little concerned with, you know, the step-up starts to get a little bit more confusing, the more numbers on the page, the more people are going to lose. So my real thought is just keep this as simple as we can. Again, the board is asking the community, this is what we're proposing, do you support such a thing? But to get into the, the design of the potential referendum with the entire community is confusing, and you won't end up with good data. Because people, they just don't know. They would need a lot more information, or they're just going to say, I don't know, I'm confused. And I guess then if someone's confused, they tend not to support what you're proposing because they're confused. People, if they have a voice in helping you create what you're proposing in terms of yes, no, that's good, but not in terms of designing it in detail.
Nate, at the moment, after that, if people want to give feedback on your plans, they don't necessarily want to create the plans for you. And the more, the more confusion there is, I think people will land on, I get, there's a tax increase forever for a shorter-term time, and then you probably wouldn't need a survey question because I don't want to answer the bad one. So if there is any confusion, don't just laugh, you know, laugh, but shorter, cheaper for now.
Then I would, I would tend to agree with that because I think when you start reading these feasibility or financial stability questions, I'm not sure how the average person would respond, other than yes or no, without with comments. And I think the other thing, we have used step-up in the past, and they've been very successful in helping us manage our tax base. And I think the question would be, you know, in explaining it, you know, you're going to have to explain to say, hey, this has been used successfully to manage your tax rate, so would you rather us manage your tax rate, or you just want us to increase your tax rate? You know, it just, I think the strategy the board has used in the past has worked, and it's been effective.
Well, maybe, are there any more questions for them, or do we want to get into discussion?
Discussion is good.
So.
That's a good question.
I sort of agree with, I agree with part of what Jack is saying.
Which part?
Recurring or non-recurring, I really do believe, I agree, I think that should be our decision. As I was thinking about earlier, I'm thinking, so, well, there's certain circumstances where I would like a recurring, and there's somewhere I want a non-recurring. And the question doesn't stipulate which condition. And so to me, I do think that gets a mixed bag of information. And so I would agree with our advisors that that probably makes more sense that that should be a board decision in May, or I think that was on the timeline. In terms of the step-up or continual increase, the same amount each year, I'd feel the same about that. I think that's a board decision, and we just explain to them how it's going to be financed. Okay, this is our proposal, if we want to do the step-up, it's going to be for one million in year one, two, and this is the total amount that it will be. That was how the previous one was done. We didn't ask them if that's how they wanted to have that done. And so I think those are two board decisions versus survey questions.
Did you have an example of a non-recurring one that you'd want? When you said you want some, do you have an example in mind?
I'm leaning to non-recurring for those expenses that aren't going away. And that's the eight-point-one million are there.
That you're recurring.
Oh, for non-recurring.
You'd want recurring for those that aren't going away.
And I really hesitate recurring when we're talking about financing pay wages because in year four or year, whenever it's time to revolve for those, if those go away, what are we going to do with salaries? Decrease them. Now, so for any expense that I think is going to continue, we did this with the intermediate school with the tech, and I forget what the other fund was, maintenance and construction. And those have been going on ever since then, and they meet the costs that we have, the recurring costs.
So that referendum was a step-up recurring referendum that specifically called out a requirement that three-hundred thousand each year had to go for tech and three-hundred thousand had to go for, but that whole question was recurring.
Right. The 2020 operational was sunset with the idea of, let's see what the state budget's going to look like. And that was really, we had no idea what was going to happen. And so to me, something like that does make sense. That's the kind of situation where I would say a non-recurring I would support. But when you know what the number's going to be over time, it's not going to change.
Oh, you're saying you're going to need it, but you're going to want to come back with it and come back with a different request, a different number for the non-recurring? Is that what I'm having understanding? That's.
For the non-recurring, you would have to come back and keep asking for it, and I.
Correct, and you're saying.
I don't think that's a great idea. That's what I think should be the recurring referendum.
But you're saying that for just the things that have already been put into the budget, that we are currently using as part of that base, and we know will always be there. But anything after that, so you're looking at the eight-point-one million as recurring, but new needs like the staff compensation and additional operational costs, we do those step-up and non-recurring.
If a sale rates, that needs to be non-recurring. The other one, the third part, I think, could be non-recurring because we don't, that's the part that, is that linked to the budget or not?
So those details would never go into.
No, I don't think they should.
So when you're looking at the survey numbers, how do you feel about that page that's not up there anymore, that has, it has the financials and the taxes? Yeah. Does that give us the information that we want? It asks the public, this is what we need. Is that enough information for us then, as a board, to make those decisions on recurring, non-recurring, two years? Do we make all those background decisions and just ask the community, we need eleven-point-six million?
That's basically what you're asking for, you say, we need eleven-point-six million, and we'll figure out.
And we'll figure it out.
We'll figure out how we're managing the budget, and I think those numbers show that we've managed the budget pretty efficiently, and we've been good stewards of tax.
I think they have a lot of faith in what we're doing, and I agree, all the details.
You know. Go ahead. One of the things I just want to kind of help the conversation along, I just asked Steve, kind of, what do we need for the, to finalize the survey?
Yeah.
That's kind of what our piece is. There's two pieces that we need. One is two-year versus four-year, because we have to articulate that, because you see that in the question, there are the eleven-point-six each year for two years. And then is that going to be a stepped-up number or a solid number? I think that helps us to ask the question. The recurring, non-recurring piece, I think we can make a decision at a later point in time. Is that, we don't need that on the referendum piece. But we do need to at least have some direction to clarify that, though, so we can add as much clarity to the questions as possible. So I know Bill and Rob, is there anything you would add to that as far as direction that we need in order to kind of finalize the work we're doing?
Yeah, right now, you're, my understanding would be, if you, well, firstly, you get two calendar, or two questions per calendar year, and they can be capital or operational in your case. Right now, we're proposing to ask one. I think if you're going to ask a, one question for a recurring amount, say, the one we're asking for eight-point-one million on a recurring basis to maintain current programs and services, that would be a separate question than a non-recurring that would then be used to pay for increasing hourly staff compensation and increasing costs. So if you want to go down that road, then I think it needs to be a, I think there needs to be two questions there. Because I think ultimately, when it ends up on the ballot, it would be, if the board wants to break it into a recurring and a non-recurring, I think the survey should reflect that strategy. Right now, the survey that we see in front of us is really a non-recurring, two-year operating referendum, that's what, that's what's on your screen right now. So obviously, we can change that, but right now, you're really posing a one-question, non-recurring operating referendum to the community. That makes sense?
I think we've got to go back to simplicity. It's either recurring or non-recurring, you know, breaking it apart for, we're going to do this recurring and this non-recurring, I think is confusing, you know.
Okay.
You know, from my standpoint, I'm sorry.
Does the referendum have to indicate whether it's recurring or not recurring?
Well, it should. You know, ultimately, the resolution has to, and then the survey should recollect what you're proposing to do ultimately on the referendum. So, you know, and right now, it's written as a, for each of the next two years or two school years in '25, '26, and '26, '27. So this is a two-year, non-recurring. But yeah, or if you're going to go for a recurring and provides funding on an ongoing basis, we should disclose that in the survey, if that's what the board wants to test.
Personally, I think we should break it apart then, because at this point in time, without knowing how the community feels about it, I would like to see the eight-point-one million being recurring. So you don't have to keep coming back for the eight-point-one million.
But you're going to have to come back for sale rates, too, then. And then, are we really serious about, are we really serious about compensating if it's only a two-year option? Secondly, is, I guess I'd ask our consultants, is there a concern, when you've got two questions of splitting the vote, oh, yeah, I'm just going to go for the non-recurring because it's cheaper?
Yes. You know, and for the folks that really, you know, depending on what they believe in what you're doing, who want to support you, but may be on a fixed income, you know, and I want to be their guy, I may choose the one that just has the thing cheaper, but that may not be, the cheaper option may not be one, what you deem to be the highest priority. So, yeah, there's a finite pool of people that will say yes, but they may split themselves up among two questions. That is a detriment.
I think there's two things we're also talking about. One is about the survey questions, and let's not get those mixed up with the referendum question. Because I think the, it may go back, Mark, and Steve. Because I think the, it may go back, Mark, as Steve and I were just sidebaring here, to your original question of page back, was do we ask a more specific question about each one of those breakouts? Which I said, which I think, Bill, you were talking about, you have a draft of that for you, Steve and Ally, to talk about tomorrow.
Yep.
But you know, if you go back to the next page, I kind of, I didn't see that on the original one. You kind of answered that question, if you would not support the referendum, which, so you're going to get that feedback there.
That's exactly right. So it went from asking it at the introductory level to backing it out once they see the total. Because the argument is, well, I don't know what the total tax impact, do you have an informed decision yet? So you get to this page, so that's why we moved the, because if you wouldn't support it, why not? And then you can back, back up the bus based on that data there. So that's exactly what happened. It used to be upfront, then it got moved in back.
Yeah. The reason why I'm upfront based, you know, that we ultimately disented against it is if I'm against one of the building blocks, am I automatically going to be against the whole thing?
Sure.
Because I'm always saying the piece of it is no. So now by definition, the whole thing is no because of what I just said.
So that answered your question, Mark.
So that's, that part I think is fine.
That answered your piece?
So two, two versus four. How do we settle that? Are we in favor of two years versus four years?
I think I'm in favor of two.
So we, are we, do we have consensus on two years? So that these guys can...
We do not.
Well, again, there's, go ahead, Dawn.
I was just going to say, like, I understand that we need to go back in two years for a capital referendum, but I think it shows a lack of ability to plan on our part if we can't figure out an operational referendum that will cover at least four years.
I guess my only argument, Dawn, would be that we're also trying to figure out where the state budget comes. And that's, that's a bit of our unknown. And I think that's been the challenge over the last number of years, has been we're kind of living state budget to state budget. So that's, that's, I guess, my only concern with the four years is trying to project out and then not having, I mean, you always have the opportunity to do some cost correction in two years. But I, that's, I guess, why I lean towards the two versus the four, is solely just because I think the planning part of it's more difficult.
And I tend to agree with that because, you know, we don't have the crystal ball here. And, you know, the next state budget might be a lot more positive towards, towards education.
You're an optimist.
Well, you know, there's landscape that's changing theoretically. You know, with the new maps, who knows where that goes? You know, and it gives you information, and you can adjust it in two years.
I have to agree. And Dawn, I agree that I would like to be able to plan more than two years, but almost 50% of our budget comes from the state. And they don't give us that opportunity to plan. So I'm pretty content with a two-year, because that's kind of what we do every year, every two years, is we figure it out.
Every three years, we wait for it.
Yep, we wait for it, we figure it out. So having a referendum every two years at least gives you a source to help figure it out.
You know exactly where you're at? Or you have a better idea for it there?
Yeah.
So if we go that route, recurring is totally off the table.
No, I don't think recurring is totally off the table. We have a big chunk of money that is, we're never going to decrease. I would like to maintain, I don't know if we ask it in the survey, but that 8.1 for sure, we always need. And why shouldn't that at some point go recurring? And maybe in five years, the board will sit here and say, okay, we have 10 million that we ask for every two years, let's make some of that recurring. You know, I think it's, it gives you an opportunity to really look at the budget very closely, analyze, use, and not ask for more than you need. And then at some point, when you see it's been in my budget now for five years, recurring.
You know, I think one of the things to take a look at, you know, Randy's first slideshow about failed referendums, why were they failed referendums? And I agree, you know, I think, you know, when we first got to the community, you know, you get this building, you never, you never get to build another building, which was crazy, you know? And I think since we've done the long-range planning, we've done, done the, you know, we've done what we've done over the last 10 or 13 years, we've managed the budget. You know, I, what we're seeing is that referendums are passive in Wannakee. And I've got a lot of confidence in, in the voters and the people of Wannakee supporting education. And I think they, I think they should have a say in that. I, you know, as long as the board does, you know, moves the community forward, education forward, I think, I think the community deserves, the taxpayer deserves the right to, to, on a regular basis.
They could, any, either way, they'll tell.
No, it's Jack.
I'm sorry, Jack. I've also two raised something yesterday out of here. I mean, they'll get the voice when they make the vote, either way. Whether it's recurring or non-recurring.
Well, they won't hope for it again on Monday night. You'll be asking for it. I mean, you'll, you'll be asking for it different either way, but instead of asking for the 11.6, you know, if you did that as, or the, I don't want to say it, the amount will be smaller, right? When you're asking for it each time, each two-year. But it's not going to adjust the, this $8.8 million...
It doesn't ever go that way.
And it's already on your taxes.
Is not decreasing or adjusting your tax rate.
Right.
The only thing that's adjusting your tax rate is the...
The new one.
The 2.37. Correct. But if you're saying, so let's say this isn't impacted or isn't figured into a recurring at all, right? So our baseline is 8.1 million. We're going to go with the, and now we want to add, if we somehow explain them to this, if we're adding this additional, what's the difference there, 2. or 3. whatever million? The next time this comes around, our baseline is now 11.6.
Yes.
And then we're going to say, you know, of that, 11.6 is already figured in, and here's the other 5 million or whatever at that point. So, you know what I mean? It's a non-recurring that to, in total, is like 16 million, and then it'll just keep going that way.
It's bigger and bigger.
And then keep, right. But each two years, you're asking for it, and it keeps growing bigger, but your tax base doesn't go like that. It's just really...
And you've got districts that have done non-recurring every year, every three to five years for 15 years, 20 years. And that is a model out there. And then it does, it's, exactly as you say, pretty soon they're asking for a non-recurring referendum for $20 million.
Correct.
And it's X amount is moving. And I think that's the conversation to have. I don't know if you need it for the survey, which is regarding, kind of the question John brought up the other day, is do you want to keep the 8.1 as recurring and the additional dollars as non-recurring to assess it? That is an option. It doesn't have to be two questions on the referendum. Steve, I know it can be one. But I'm not sure we need that level of decision-making here tonight or on Monday. We just need to kind of have a sense of, I think, the two-year, four-year piece, just so we have a way to cost it, is really what, is what we're asking for. And then the step up versus the solid number is kind of, I think, the two variables that will help us then to at least put another draft of this together and bring it back to you on Monday night.
I would be in support of two-year and a step up being included on the survey. I think it makes most sense.
Do we vote on it?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to vote on it?
Do we need to vote? Do you want to discuss it?
I guess that's up to you. I mean, we're not going to vote on the survey until Monday, because we'll bring a final draft of that. We're just looking for some feedback from the board so we can finish the survey and bring back as close to a final draft as possible.
Two years.
Two years.
No, I'm fine with that. My concern with the two-year is if, when we go to a capital referendum, there's going to be an operational referendum for that as well. And that's going to make that number even bigger. And that's why I hate to blend those things together. And so if we can have, I think the survey, I support what we're doing, but it will make the decision which way we want to go. I think that 8.1 has to be a standard that should be a recurring number so it doesn't mix with other operational numbers. It just makes the numbers too big. My opinion?
Yeah, I support two years.
A step up?
Stay on state budget.
With a step up?
With a step up, absolutely.
I'll go that way.
Dawn?
So when you say a step up, are you saying you're going to step up and do a recurring? Or are you going to just step up the amount?
Step up the amount.
Step up the amount.
Then it'll be a, for a four-year?
Oh, that's right. We're stepping up three years here.
Step up to, no, it's just...
Step up to two.
Be a step up to two, Bill, is I think what they're talking about.
Okay. My perception, well, no. My opinion is this, we're going to be having this exact same conversation when we're trying to decide how to structure the referendum, because we aren't asking the public for their perception on having a set amount of it be recurring, which is the 8.1 million. And I agree with Joan, and I agree with Mark, that that's a fixed amount, we're always going to need it, and these non-recurring referendums are going to get huge. And we're going to have this conversation with others disagreeing with that and us feeling that way, because we don't have any other input than what's happening here. And without the, without the public trying to get in, it's going to be our own opinions and, and it'll be the exact same conversation.
The problem is that the board can't agree. So if the board can't agree, how will the public agree? You're not, you won't get data back that'll be conclusive, you should do this, or you should do this. It'll be, it'll be mixed. The board's a microcosm of the community, actually much more inform the community. So I don't believe you're going to get data that will give you clear direction when you're done to do, trying to do that. So I think your theory, you're right, we need more feedback from the community, but it's too complicated to get good data, based on my experience.
So Dawn, it doesn't mean we can't do what you said, but is it, should we put it on the survey?
Yeah, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, it doesn't mean we can't do it, it just means we're going to have the exact same conversation again when we're deciding what to do, because we don't have input from the public.
But I think, I think what we want to do is get to the point where the board coalesces around a shared vision of the way to do it right. And strong arguments have been made for the 8.1 million is going to be an ongoing recurring cost. Let's ask for a recurring referendum and fund that. And that would be a good, that's a good survey question, that's dependable. How it's written right now is a good survey question and dependable. But really, what the average person says, what are you proposing? What will it do? And how much will it cost me? And I'll be able to answer whether or not I would support such a thing. That's really what you want to use the survey for, is to test a proposition, a plan, a proposal.
And I agree, Dawn. I mean, one of the things that Steve and I have talked about is, I mean, our job tonight was not to define the whole referendum. It was really to try to get to what we view as some of the highest level questions to make sure we're on the right track and test some of those pieces. And you're right, there's going to be this dialogue, it's going to repeat itself, because we do have to make some decisions coming into later this spring, early summer. I think the time when we have to actually make the decision is August. I think our hope was trying to do it in June. So we'll, what we'll do is we'll take some of this feedback back. And I know that Bill and Rob and Steve and Ally are meeting tomorrow, and try to, we'll try and decipher some of the feedback down. And then it will be in board book, we'll be putting forth kind of another draft of the survey, and we can see how that plays out on Monday night.
Yeah, I guess I'm disappointed in two ways. One way is that this survey is an opportunity for us to inform the public of what these things mean. There aren't that many communications that go out from the entire district to voters. And this is our first crack at taking it tough and educating. And I don't feel like we're doing that. The second piece is, is the board learning what they need to learn in order to do this referendum? Right? What, I guess, looking at this question that's currently worded, will have input on whether or not the public is going to continue to support the money they've already earned, and teasing out whether or not they would approve additional increases or already sell, I mean...
Is there a better way to...
I'm being lenient enough here, I guess, to my question.
Is there a better way to send out a communication to the public defining these two things? To make them more understandable, send a survey? We're informing you somehow, or, like, maybe it isn't, obviously, it isn't clear enough. Is a survey going to help with that? We're going to, we're going to spell it out in the survey, and then they're asked their question? Or do we try to educate them, don't ask in their opinion on each, just throwing that out?
Haven't we tried to educate the forms? I mean, that's a humongous task to translate this.
And I think to Dawn's point, one of the things that we've used these surveys for is to, they both educate and inform. So it's, if there's something that we haven't done enough educating on, I guess there's an opportunity here to look at that. Because that's part of the reason for the survey.
Would the survey gener, you know, they do the survey, but after taking the survey, more questions bubble to the top that we could answer? I mean, we would find out what kind of confusion or acceptance there is after the survey. I don't know. I don't think we have a lot of people who are reading the survey with heart and soul and understanding it, or want to, or will go to a unit, I mean, a conference on how to do school finances. I don't think we've got a public that's going to do that.
Your basic question you're asking is, do you support a referendum for this amount of money and this much of an impact on the taxes? That's your question.
Yeah, that's it.
And that's really your question. And then, and I think the other details that we get, that we have to figure out, is how do you structure that and how is that going to go forward? I think that's the general question that the general public wants to know, because I think, at least from my perspective.
So I guess in closure, you got the information you need to go forward?
Yeah, we'll take all of this into account and we'll be working on it tomorrow and kick it back out so that you can see it for Monday night.
Do you need any more information from us?
Anything else? I don't think so. I think we're all right.
We've given enough direction.
We've given us enough direction.
So we will be meeting again next Monday?
Yeah, we'll be, this will be on the agenda. There'll be two things on the agenda for Monday that we'll carry over from tonight. One is with regards to the partners for 2026 and the planning for that high school and the athletic piece. And then the second piece will be the survey. Given the feedback we had here tonight, we'll have this dialogue internally tomorrow and work on the next draft.
So then with that, you need a motion for adjournment?
Second.
On the favor?
I...
Thank you, Dawn.